Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education Business Meeting of October 26, 2017. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First order of business, I'd like to resolve to approve the minutes for the work session business meeting of October 12, 2017.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, before we move on, I would like to ask the board if they would mind a very quick agenda shift and to do our student representative report right before our Pride in Putnam Valley. Is that okay with everyone on the board? If that is, Erin, who I know you have a play to produce, take it away.
Thank you. Students had an amazing time during Spirit Week last week. There was so much participation and enthusiasm that they cannot wait for next year. We collected a ton of food for the food pantry, which is amazing, and seniors were very happy to have won Color Wars for their last year here. The Bennett Fit Concert and Potluck Dinner was also held last week, and was a collaborative effort to provide much-needed help to the islands of Puerto Rico and the Caribbean region. The event raised over $4,000, which does not include the items that everybody donated. We'd also like to thank Mrs. Demain for her coloring pages throughout the library and the sticker puzzle she is hanging on the wall for students to fill in throughout the day, which is a new favorite among all the students. Boys varsity soccer played their second round of sectionals last week and fought very hard, but unfortunately did not advance. Girls varsity soccer has made it to the semifinals, which will be tomorrow at Irvington High School at 3:00 p.m., and we encourage all of you to go and support our PV girls. The drama this year is "A Doll's House" by Henrik Ibsen and will be performed next weekend, November 3 at 7:00 p.m., November 4 at 2:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m., and the last show will be held November 5 at 2:00 p.m. The cast and crew are working very hard and are so excited to perform for all of you, and tickets are now on sale.
Thank you very much. And you have to go take care of the place, so whenever you need to go, that's fine. And now I'd like to move right on to Pride in Putnam Valley.
As always, this Pride in Putnam Valley opportunity is one that brings a community together and brings our spirit together as well, when we have the opportunity to recognize members of our community, students as well, for work they do above and beyond, something that contributes greatly to the community as a whole. In this case, the Pride in Putnam Valley will be presented to Haley Lewis. Haley, and we'll tell you why. So, I wanted to just make some comments about Haley, about the things that she's done that make this such an appropriate award. Last year, the board made a -- developed an initiative and had a statement about curriculum and what we could do as a school district with regard to sustainability. This was part of our whole concept of the Energy Performance Contract and moving also to the area of how do we talk to students about energy, about sustainability, in our own world, in our environment, in our school environment, in our community environment. And with that, we have some teachers who got very involved in how we could do this at the school level. And so, in one case, Nick Lenhart is the advisor to the environmental club here, and Haley Lewis has been the guiding light in the garden project here at the high school, where there is a magnificent garden. We could see it from the main hall of the main lobby in the high school. You could see the green and the produce from that garden. And Haley would take it upon herself all summer to keep the garden going and to take those vegetables and what we produced to the food pantry. So this is the connection. At the Methodist Church, we have a food pantry. We have many, many people in this community who require that additional food. I'd like you, if you'd like to say a few words, Haley, about that, about what you did, we'd appreciate it.
It was really no trouble at all. It was very fun to just go and take care of the garden and help my community. I'm really glad that this was able to help people. Thank you very much.
And it's that feeling of generosity that, and the sense of responsibility for everyone, that is what we're about here, and this is our spirit, and we appreciate. I have to say also Haley was one of the major players in the Color War senior, really quite spectacular, main hallway where the theme was Army. It was serve. It was really how we serve, right? It was people who serve, appreciating and respecting those who serve, and that contribution. And Haley also provided one of the major, I'd say, it's more than a decoration, it was a whole statement about service through the dog tags. Could you talk a little bit about what you did there? Because I thought that was really magnificent when I found out about it.
Well, I wanted to help for Color Wars and not want to stay out late and decorate the hallways, so I thought it would be best to talk to Sal Mano. And me and my mother, we cut out dog tags, we wrote the names, and we just set up little necklaces for everyone.
So, there were dog tags that everyone wore, and that was this wonderful contribution to this really, the display was startling. When you came into the school, there was this remarkable sense of transformation. And Haley, you were so much part of that as well. So, you are constantly contributing, and you certainly deserve this award. And let me read it. Pride in Putnam Valley to Haley Lewis for her outstanding efforts and service in caring for the PVHS Garden during the 2017 summer. Congratulations, Haley.
And Haley, I just want to say, for the last 12 years, I've worked in a day camp, and I do the garden for the students, and it is one of their favorite specials, even though our overall director said, "How could kids like gardening so much?" But I became known as the garden lady, and I will now like to turn garden lady title over to you. Very nice. We get to do more fun things with students then? Yeah, okay.
Next, we have the, another group of students. We had a group last board meeting. Again, this group of science research, science research students from the high school will provide a presentation on the topics they are studying for their research in this program. Mr. Zupan is their instructor.
Yeah, thank you again for giving me this time. This is the second half of science research students. We have 19 in this program, so we're missing one student today. Unfortunately, he just had surgery this morning on his hand. He actually broke one of the metacarpals in his hand, and he's currently looking at research in telomeres, like aging, so the aging of cells and the aging of different proteins. So he's looking for somebody in the area for that. That's Matt Caravone. But everything went well on the surgery. I heard he's doing fine, which is very good, but obviously he can't be here tonight. So, but the other eight students, these are all the sophomores, that will be presenting their topics and asking for, if anyone knows of any professional that's in that research community that can help them and hopefully find a mentor them in their research. So, our two advisors again, Erin and Sarah, are juniors and seniors in the program, and they're, ironically, they're both currently in the process of getting their own work published. So it's really amazing to see, hopefully by, you know, the end of this school year, we should have some, you know, hopefully positive news on both of their papers. And so these students now are in the beginning stages, trying to find a mentor to help them in that process. So any help would be greatly appreciated. So, I'll turn over to them.
Good evening. My name is Marissa Back, and for my project, I'll be studying equine science, specifically the study of horses and their behavior with their surroundings. I myself have found a mentor very lately, and her name is Catherine Haft. She's up in Ithaca, New York, and she will be helping me conduct this study. Specifically, we have been currently looking at salt and salt blocks and their effects on the horse's body and their behavior, to why they would be using them so much in their water intake. The reason that I'm so interested in this is that I myself actually own a horse, and I've always been so interested in the way that he reacts with the environment and other horses react with their environment. And he himself does own a salt block, so it's very cool to see her interested in studying something like that. For instance, the behavior I found so interesting, because if you look at that image, I bet that most of you would see a very nice image of me and my horse, but when I chose that image, I didn't want to use it because his ears are pinned back, meaning that he is not happy, which is a very small detail that no one would really notice, but really stuck out to me. And I thought that that was really something that could be studied and looked further into, and how they're reacting to everything around them. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Frank Bubago, and I am working with Bionics. Bionics is the combination of the human body and a machine, so taking a prosthetic that is built digitally to have a program that will run and communicate with your own arm is what I'm looking into. I'm very concerned about this topic, because as a person with nerve damage in my right arm, I know how much of a struggle it is to have to cope every day, and I can't write as well anymore, I can't do a lot of things as well anymore, and to move my right arm, I have to think about it a lot, and it's a difficult struggle. And so, it's very passionate for me to find a way to fix this problem. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sabrina Cross, and I will be presenting you my topic, bone morphogenic protein. Bone morphogenic protein is applied via collagen spun right into the area that is broken or severed. This is an FDA-approved protein and is used on any severed limbs or broken bones. I am primarily interested in this for two reasons. Due to the fact that my father works in this field, and over the years, I have gained much of an interest in this. Secondly, my grandfather recently had an injury, and through the use of BMP, or bone morphogenic protein, his lower lumbar spine was able to be brought together and fused. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Lee, and I will be studying nutrition. Diet is strongly linked to health quality, and with research in this field, a wide variety of chronic diseases can be prevented. I will be looking for mentors in the Westchester and New York City area. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Angelica Rodones, and I'm looking into the medical field, specifically Alzheimer's disease. This is, I'm very passionate about this, because while watching a show called Grey's Anatomy, many of the patients and doctors and main characters were affected by this disease. Alzheimer's disease is one of the top 10 diseases leading to death, but is one of the ones that aren't uncurable, and I am very interested in looking to this field. I am looking for a mentor in the New York City and Westchester area.
Good evening. My name is Trent Wakehazer, and the topic I have is symbiotic relationships between organisms. The fact that two different organisms can work together to increase the chances of both these different species to survive is very interesting to me. I am looking for a mentor in the New York City and Westchester area.
Good evening. My name is Keiko Waters, and my topic is robotic surgery and nanotechnology. I find it fascinating that technology has come to the point where it can be used in surgeries to help save lives and is used without a surgeon. I'm looking for a mentor in the Westchester, New York City area.
Good afternoon. My name is Keith Weed, and I, my topic is in astrophysics, or volcano effects on climate change, and not ore. The two are connected in my head, because climate change affects our planet, and astrophysics, a big part of astrophysics is looking for planets like our own. So if we find climate in another planet outside of our own solar system, we can begin to explore. I'm looking for a mentor in the Westchester, New York City area.
Mr. Zupan, you learn something new every day, because the range of the topics, the, you know, there's always this expression about authors, "Authors write what they know." The passion that the students are bringing to these topics and the range of the topics are just mind-blowing.
Yeah, I do learn a new thing every day. One of the sophomores after school, I was with another student for a one-on-one meeting that we do as part of the program, and he goes, "Zupan, do you ever stop learning?" And I was like, "No, I'm a teacher. I never stop learning." But it was, you know, it was like, I don't like not knowing something, and it's nice to see that same passion with each of these sophomores in both sections that I have. And I was actually, it was running a little late today, because I was actually meeting with Sarah's mentor down at Fordham, and Sarah is currently working on stem cell research right now with her mentor. And it's amazing to see her, you know, looking at her last year when she was up here presenting her, you know, one slide to now spending hours down at Fordham doing, you know, a passion that she's like, "No, I think I want to get into research now." So it's really cool to see, you know, that progression happen. I do not know everything, and it's their job to know more than I know in the next four months. So it's always a lot of fun, is to go, "Okay, that sounds great," and then I'm looking on the computer, and go, "Oh yeah, okay, that makes sense. Okay, good." So, or asking their mentor to explain it to me again. It's an amazing, amazing program, so thank you. Thank you guys again for letting us have it.
And I love that we need two nights to hear the topics, or whatever it is. Okay. So is this the third or the fourth year? I don't know. Ask Mr. Zupan.
Mr. Zupan, is this our third or fourth year?
This is our fourth year.
Fourth year.
Yeah, fourth year.
Fourth year of the program.
Yeah.
So it's grown considerably.
So probably five now to thirty-five. Our first class graduated last year. Yeah, her first graduation.
So we started this four years ago.
Yeah.
It's a wonderful development of a program that has brought so many students to another level of learning. And also, one of our board members helps. Dr. Cohen here.
Yeah, he always gets the set, but thank you, Dr. Cohen. He's helped us out with stats on every project from start to finish, so.
Every project. And when I have problems with students that I work with in doctoral studies, I go to Dr. Cohen for his mentorship.
Statistical knowledge.
She knows so much.
And it doesn't end there, too. He's helped out other science research teachers in other programs, so, in other schools as well.
Yes, I know. It goes to other schools as well.
And he's just brought everything up.
And he's helped me personally, too, with my doctoral studies, before Mr. Cohen.
First of all, for those in the audience, I'm not a doctoral. I'm not. I'm a statistician. I deal with numbers. What's amazing about this is when the students and I meet, let's say we set up a two-hour meeting, for the first 90 or so minutes, they have to explain to me their science, because I just know numbers. And there are lies, damn lies, in their statistics, so I can just say anything and I impress them. But it takes, you are amazed about the research, and once they get into it, I am dealing with real scientists. I'm not dealing with high school students. I'm dealing with real scientists. It is the most impressive thing that I do.
Thank you.
And Mr. Cohen, maybe one year, one of our students will do sleep deprivation and use you as their prime stud it, because the only way you can get it done is by not sleeping. So, okay, moving right along to the Therapeutic Crisis Intervention for Schools training presentation.
Natalie, do you want to? Sure. Good evening. So tonight, we have two of our teachers who provided our teachers within our school district, K-12, training in what's called therapeutic crisis intervention services. And we had Christina Casey and Dan Turner go out to Cornell last year for training so that they can then turnkey training to all of our teachers. They have certainly far exceeded our expectations, and it's one thing to teach children well, but it's another to teach adults well. And the feedback that we have gotten from our teachers, sincere feedback, was that truly what they learned in this course changed the way they manage students in their classroom and changed the instructional practices within their classroom environment. So it was really worth all of our efforts, their efforts, and their dedication to our teachers in turnkeying this, so we appreciate that. So they're going to just describe to you about the training and the goals of the training and what they accomplished. So I welcome Christina Casey and Danny Turner.
Good evening. My name is Christina Casey.
Dan Turner.
And we're here to talk to you about therapeutic crisis intervention for schools. As Natalie mentioned, the program started two years ago with our first cohort of 11 teachers taking the training, and our second cohort was a few weeks ago with now 12 teachers completing the training, and Danny and now are certified by Cornell University to train staff members in our district. So a little bit about TCIS, therapeutic crisis intervention for schools. It was developed by Cornell University in the early 1980s for residential facilities, but then it was adapted as a crisis prevention and intervention model for schools. This is a research-based program. It is implemented in schools across the U.S. as well as other countries. All staff can and should be trained, so this is not a program that is just for special ed teachers, or just gen ed teachers, or just teaching assistants. Every staff member in a district can be trained, and actually, the more who are trained, the better. And it is already being implemented here in Putnam Valley. So a little bit about the course. It is a 30-hour course. Participants must pass three exams. One written exam, they have to master competency in the life space interview, as well as take a physical exam, so meaning that they can demonstrate the proper restraints that we teach them. And they must attend a refresher training every six months with the written and physical tests in order to keep their certification valid. In all phases of this process, from prevention to de-escalation to crisis management, this training program is oriented toward giving school personnel the tools they need to help students learn developmentally appropriate and constructive ways to deal with negative feelings of frustration, failure, anger, and pain. So really, all of our objectives are to help students identify these negative behaviors, because they're feeling these all day long. So we want to teach them how to identify these negative behaviors and how to create alternative behaviors that are more developmentally appropriate, while keeping them in the classroom and in their student activities. Through this training, we're able to give staff the tools to teach these new behaviors to our students and help them come up with coping strategies. Effective implementation includes leadership and administrative support, which we have already in our district. So far, we only have one administrator trained, and that is Jeanette Mistrada at the elementary school, but we know that our administrators are supporting us in this endeavor. We need social workers and clinical services participation. Right now, we have two trained at the elementary school, and there's been expressed interest of our clinical staff taking this training in our other buildings as well. We also need supervision and post-crisis response, so that when a crisis occurs or when we're intervening with a student, that we are supervising each other as staff members who are intervening. Training and competency standards, that's what Danny and I are here for. We took the training course at Cornell, and all of our lessons and activities that we teach to our participants are directly from the training manual from Cornell. And data-driven incident monitoring and feedback, so that any time that there is a crisis or a restraint has to be performed, that we are documenting it, as well as making sure that managing the incidences. Is this increasing? Is the student's behavior going down? And what caused the student to react that way? An overview of the curriculum, there are so many different things that we are teaching our teachers to use with our students. So we begin with behavioral support techniques. So these are all the things that a teacher is going to do within their classroom to reduce the difficult behaviors that students might exhibit, such as helping them with their work, making sure that the environment is welcoming and friendly to them. Emotional competency, so the staff member needs to understand themselves and their own triggers, as well as the students. The power struggle, every one of our participants found that this to be the most applicable part of the training was the power struggle, is really seeing, oh, this is where a student's behavior begins, this is their reaction, and then the adult comes in, and the adult either has the power to end that power struggle or to continue it. Active listening, so when an adult is talking with a student, are you actually hearing what the student is telling you, and are you giving your full attention? Stress model of crisis, this is a bell curve, and it shows us the student at their base level, baseline, sorry, their baseline behavior, so their normal level of functioning. How are they normally? And then, triggering event escalation phase, outburst phase, if it were to get that far. And at each point of the spell curve, how to get them back down to recovery and back down to their baseline behavior, so that they can participate fully in the classroom. Crisis co-regulation, when a student is in crisis, how do we, as the staff members, intervene and talk with the student to help get them back to baseline? Emotional first aid, so if a student is beginning to show signs that they may go into crisis, how can we step in quickly and effectively, talk that student back down, and keep them in their activity? The life space interview, any time that there is a behavioral issue or a restraint that is performed, we do a life space interview, which is a very structured conversation with the student, in which we talk about their behavior and connecting their emotions to the behavior, and then discussing alternative behaviors for that student to use in the future. And the very final part of this is protective interventions or physical restraints. We really want to stress that physical restraints are the absolute last step. So if this is, say, a 10-step program, restraint would be step 12. It is the absolute last step, and restraints are very rare. That is, only when a student is violent and is causing harm to themselves or others. We need to step in as the adults and to restrain them and keep them from hurting themselves or others. So TCIS and PV CSD. So far, we have one administrator trained at the elementary school. We have teachers in the elementary school, six trained, seven in the middle school, two in the high school. Teaching assistants and aides, three in the elementary school, two in the middle school. We have clinical staff in the elementary school, and we also have one of our district office A couple of the photos from our training, so during the training, we do a lot of flip charts and class discussions, so these were just some of the things that were around our classroom as we were doing the training a couple weeks ago, which was a five-day-long At the end of the training, we asked all participants to create, to give us an evaluation of the course and what they thought of it. So some of the questions we asked them, "What is the most significant thing you learned during this week?" Many of them said, "How to de-escalate behaviors, avoid the power struggle, how to restrain without injury, how to manage behaviors and decrease violence and aggression, and to help teach self-regulation skills to our students." What additional support do you need to implement what you learned? Many of the teachers really stressed to have building-level administrators trained. While we know that we have administrator support, it's really important that we have a common language, and administrators see what this looks like, and the need for time. There are going to be times where we need to be called to help out. What happens to our classrooms? What happens to the next period we're supposed to go to? So these are some things that we need the administrators to be trained in, so that they see what this looks like and the support that we need on our end as the teachers. Continued refreshers every six months, which is already built into our program. Many people said that they felt pretty comfortable with the material, but are looking forward to the refreshers to continue keeping that up and practice in the future. A lot of people also say that they want their teaching assistants to be trained in this as well. And actually, Dan and I will be doing a workshop with our teaching assistants on the upcoming Superintendent's Conference Day. And every one of our participants rated this a five out of five, that they would recommend this training to their colleagues. So the next steps for this program, have more administrators trained, have more staff trained, so again, teachers, teaching assistants, aides, even And actually, Dan and I will be doing a workshop with our teaching assistants on the upcoming superintendent's conference day. And every one of our participants rated this a five out of five that they would recommend this training to their colleagues. So the next steps for this program, have more administrators trained, have more staff trained. So again, teachers, teaching assistants, aides, even our lunch monitors. Every staff can and should be trained. We need to create district-wide protocols. Dan and I will be working with Natalie and some of our other administrators. What do we do when a restraint is needed? How are we notified? What kind of time is that going to take? How else can we support the student? We want to come up with a common language that is universal throughout all of our buildings so that if I happen to be at the high school one day or Dan is at the elementary school, we know that the same protocols are applicable in all three buildings. And continue to refresh your trainings every six months. Anything you want to ask?
Yeah. In case you couldn't tell, I'm really just here for moral support. Christina really does a great job of all this and it has been very successful and I do have to say that a lot of that is due to her hard work and how dedicated she's been to this since we left Cornell. You know, they basically gave us, you know, protocol and procedure to follow after we were trained and certified to teach this to our colleagues. And she really went above and beyond that, which would we have survived by following simply what they showed us? Absolutely. And we would have done it well, but the work she's done really brought it to another level as far as our organization is concerned and things of that nature. So I got to say a big thank you to her because she definitely made my life a lot easier. And I'll also say that, you know, she's not tenured yet, so I told her she had to do this presentation. No, I'm kidding. She totally took the initiative and was eager to do it also. One thing I will say is that when we discussed this training, when it first came up to us and our colleagues, the first cohort we went through, people were so fixated on this concept of restraint and that's what a lot of our colleagues were referring to it as. And as Christina said, restraint is the very last step in any of these situations. We're talking about de-escalation techniques that can simply be used when you have a student who is off-task and, you know, a little too chatty with his friends or they start to become slightly agitated due to their misunderstanding of the work that's assigned to them. It's really more about keeping the kid in the learning environment, de-escalating any type of behavior that might possibly, in some circumstances, have them maybe remove them a room or send out in the hallway to work or down to an alternate placement room where they can work on their own. This is really there to keep the kid in the learning environment and on task with their peers and their teacher, of course. So that's really about it.
Yeah, and I'll just jump in here. One of the things that you heard was that the administrators, you know, really receiving training and we're looking at doing that next summer during the summer months because we have a little bit more flexibility with training some of the administrators with that many hours of training that's required and then putting them on a rotating schedule of their certification. So we are looking at that, but I think, again, to Danny and Christina's point where the de-escalation and the key word for me anyway is power struggle and where that in that very moment when a student becomes, you know, argumentative or agitated or upset with either with another student or with the teacher or whatever, it really is in that moment the language we're using with our students on how to refocus them, change their behavior and how to manage it so that it doesn't go to a place where then they're being disciplined or we're having to deal with a crisis. So it really is proactive and preventative and helps teachers have those tools and that language and a common language that they use to redirect. So kudos to you guys and really a warm thank you for all you've done.
And this is certainly close to my heart. I was a trainer myself at one point. I go through the trainer, refresher training now in my district. And my trainer said, which I've never forgotten, if you know the first nine steps, you very rarely need to use the tenth. The point is to not ever need that restraint technique. And just the mindset of entering into interaction with a student, that it's not a win-lose, I'm the grown-up and I'm going to win, but entering it into how are we going to have this be positive for everybody?
It's funny because when we discuss the power struggle, it's like you can literally see the light bulbs going off over people's heads where they're like, oh, now I see.
And it's hard for somebody who, this is my classroom and I'm in charge. It's not easy. And you made the training fun. It was dinnertime conversation in my house. One of my family members participated and really was relevant. I think that's what you did Christina to make it not just about what Cornell taught, but used examples in the building and again, keeping the confidentiality. But it is very important and I think all staff, bus drivers need to know, just those and use the same language. The life space interview, who knows what a life space interview is? It's life-changing. It could be life-changing.
It's been really exciting to see teachers come back to us like the day after training saying, I already used some of this stuff with my students today. And I'm like, good, that's what we want. So everyone who's taken the training is implementing it the next day. It's not like it's something that is in addition to their curriculum. It is simply about building relationships with our students and keeping them emotionally healthy.
I'm interested in the other initiative that seems to be either, you know, that needs to tie into this somehow is the implementation of the Yale ruler. I mean, we're dealing with Yale and Cornell. So I mean, we're in good hands as far as training is concerned, but how the people that are involved in training are using both together because obviously you can diffuse a lot of things if you know where they are and, you know, you're before you even get to intervention or de-escalation, knowing where they're coming from up front by using, you know, in a regular basis, the Yale ruler or the mood meter, that type of thing. What's the concerted effort in the district of how those two are working together?
Do you want me to speak to that? Sure. I think that they're the same in many ways, but different, this is more highly specialized for students that we believe and know that can go into crisis. The same concepts though, in the beginning and to your point where just knowing, being able to read a situation, helping students identify their own internal mechanisms. So there is a crossover and some of our teachers that are, that participated in this training are participating with the Yale ruler. And how those two overlap, I think is really in that beginning phase and in the self-identification and helping students become aware of their own, where they are in that process. And then depending on the age and their own self-awareness, bringing them through a process.
Because I don't think these should be operating in separate orbits. These are totally things that should be in the same orbit.
They definitely complement one another.
They complement, I think that's because Yale ruler, everyone is getting exposed to that, every teacher. And this eventually, we hope more and more teachers will be involved in this, but the Yale ruler is sort of, everyone gets to develop this vocabulary of emotions and identifying.
The Yale ruler language can be something that the person doing TCIS can use in a life space interview. Where are you on the emotional scale?
They can look at the mood meter with the student, identify feelings as well with that mood chart.
One of the visual aids that always pops up during our trainings is the iceberg. And the tip of the iceberg being the student behaviors, how they act out. And what lies below the surface is I feel geared a little more towards the Yale ruler in what emotions, what feelings are actually causing those outbursts, causing those behaviors.
What was the morning like? What happened to breakfast? You know, all those other things.
Absolutely. If there was breakfast, you know. So they definitely complement one another. I'll be honest, I missed out on the Yale stuff last year and I'm definitely looking forward to that this year because I know how valuable it is with, you know, mental, emotional health and social health as well. So and we've heard great things about that from other people as well too, so looking forward to that also.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And you all got to wear sweatpants for a week, which is always.
Exactly. I think that was everyone's favorite part.
That was a struggle for a lot of people. I said, wait, I gotta go back.
And it was brought up. Every time I ran into somebody, they were like, I'm participating in the training. Okay, good.
Dr. Wills will now be talking about the upcoming New York State School Board Association Convention and adopted resolutions.
With a report from that.
Report.
So what we are going to be talking about are the positions that were adopted at school boards by school board members at the 2017 business meeting. And these resolutions and these positions are all relevant in some way to the operations of schools and to the goals that we have in schools. And so we are going to just focus on those that have some specific, we think have very, are very relevant to our particular work as a school organization. So the first one that I would like to look at is number four. And the adopted resolution is resolved that the New York State School Boards Association supports efforts to have the state require all teacher preparation programs demonstrate the quality of the preparation of the teachers they produce as graduates. And interestingly enough, this is, this concern at the college level, not just at our school level, but it's also a concern at these college preparation programs. And the concern is about not just the preparation, but having enrollments of students who wish to become teachers. We are entering into a period of teacher shortage in many areas of teaching and the colleges are going to be looking to high schools to see if we can revive future teacher organizations and to make connections with the colleges and the high schools. This particular resolution is something that has come up again and again as school districts look for teachers and look for teachers who are trained in the most current practices that are used in the schools. When we bring a teacher on board, we provide some trainings and we have trainings here in our school districts in certain types of strategies. Now we're looking at strategies that engage students in the classroom that are active learning. Sometimes at the colleges and often at the colleges, some of the faculty have been trained at an earlier time, have different expectations for what teachers do in the classroom and there can be a mismatch in the generational changes that have taken place in practice, in educational practice. So this is particularly important now as we look at the 21st century skills. So to me, this is one of those very important resolutions that the teacher preparation programs sort of bring to the table, teacher candidates who are ready to move into 21st century educational skills. Number five, this is the resolution that New York State School Boards supports authorizing testing accommodations for students with disabilities. Well, we do have accommodations for students with disabilities, but they are looking at the testing and looking to see are students going to be tested at the same grade level as everyone else when their level of achievement has not reached that point? Should we adapt the tests more to the disabilities? Perhaps, Ms. Doherty, you'd like to say something? Natalie would like to say something along those lines?
Sure. I think that they've been exploring this on and off, as you know, throughout the years. You know, developmentally appropriate tests, I think that, I think it would benefit many, many students and allow them to show the progress that they've made over time. And that really is the goal, even with an IEP, with an individualized education plan, the goal is to see progress at their individual rate over time. And so there really has been a mismatch in standardized testing and student progress for years, so I'm glad to see that.
And you know, and in fact, when they introduce computer-based testing, which will be happening in the next two years in New York State, and it's something that we need to think about as we prepare our students to participate in these tests, that we have them, have us think about how we're going to have some way for them to understand how these new testing situations will work. And in those tests, they're more, they can be more adaptive. The computer-based testing can in fact immediately adapt a test to the ability level of the student, which makes it a more realistic and fair and reasonable kind of assessment of the student's achievement. The next is number six, which is supporting a, the New York School Board supports a rigorous process for granting teacher certification. I think right now, we do have a fairly rigorous process. We've heard of modifications that the state may make because as I mentioned before, we do have shortages in certain areas. I think the issue will be to maintain the standards while perhaps looking at alternative routes, but keeping a route to certification because people are, sometimes do come from, for example, second careers and so on, but how do we maintain and are we sure that the rigor is maintained in the process while expanding opportunities for teachers in areas of shortage such as science, math, some of these areas are harder now to fill. And it certainly is true in the English language learner group. The next, number seven, resolve that New York State School Boards reform the system of educator discipline to cap the length of time educators awaiting a 30-20A proceeding are paid. This is an issue that has been daunting for a number of years, that when there is discipline through a 30-20A, that often there is a long, long period of time before the situation is resolved and there is an enormous expense for school districts in managing that and bringing another teacher on board. The next resolution is resolve that New York State School Boards supports legislation to amend the tribo amendment of the Taylor Law to eliminate the obligation of school districts to pay step increments after the expiration of collective bargaining agreements. When it comes to the collective bargaining process, we're the only state that has this particular requirement. And what it does do is it doesn't, let's say what it doesn't do, it does not expedite agreements because there is not the incentive to come to an agreement. So even though you have fair bargaining and everyone has come to the table, this type of, this ruling has made it very difficult at times to come to a timely resolution of the agreement. The next one is, to talk about would be 11. Resolve that the New York State School Boards Association supports fully funding the foundation aid formula that would ensure the viability and sustainability of New York's public schools. Perhaps Jill would talk a little bit about this because frankly, the formula is always changing every year. We don't, it doesn't allow us to predict and create a budget in a timely way very often.
Right. So this was for the sake of restoring aid that was adopted in 2007, eight and it's supposed to be, you know, phased in over four years when they first adopted it. You know, the recession came, they decided that they weren't gonna, they abandoned the idea of doing, you know, giving the districts aid. And when the gap elimination aid ended, they were the, you know, we were calling for it to be restored again so that they could phase it back in. And the language really hasn't changed in the, in the way the foundation aid was laid out. So now the School Boards Association is calling for it to try to be phased back in again. The districts are receiving a lot less than what they were originally told that they were going to receive, so it's hurting us. Yep.
It hurts when the formula is not predictable and is not sufficient.
Right.
Number 12, resolve that the New York State School Board supports meaningful reforms to the tax cap levy formula that would ensure stability and sustainability of New York's public schools. Do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, so on this one, the changes in the formula are, you know, whole- So on this one, the changes in the formula are, you know, hopefully to include any kind of Bosse's capital project or anything that can contribute to the formula itself when we do the tax cap calculation. And that's the one item that would be affecting us. They're also talking about pilots, but we don't have pilots in our district, so.
Yes. And, and what happens is the community and at large, because of the, the statements to the newspapers that it's a 2% cap, assume that that is the figure that is used. And in fact, for our school district, it's been at 1% or less.
Right. And they talk about that one in another, in another one as well.
Right. Okay. Let's see. Number, did we talk about 13?
No, it's similar.
13 is similar, but, but there it is, the negative.
Right. So when your, your tax cap becomes negative, they want to try to eliminate that and say that, you know, we shouldn't have to apply that formula if you're ending up in a negative, in a negative number. But right now, it is in effect that you, you may have to apply a negative number unless you want to go for a super majority vote, of course, which no one wants to do.
So again, we can have a negative tax cap with the, with the current.
We haven't had, been in that situation, but you know.
No, but it's happened.
It can happen.
The next one of reference and relevance is resolved that New York State School Boards Association supports reforming the system of educator discipline to authorize school districts to terminate tenured teachers without a 30-20A hearing if they have been convicted of child abuse in an education setting, or their teaching certificate has been revoked by the State Department of Education, or they have failed to obtain permanent certification in the requisite time period. So this is basically applying the law as opposed to a proceeding when these serious violations have occurred. And again, there's a great cost incurred when this is a drawn-out process, when in fact, the ultimate, at the end, in these situations, the ultimate end is, is, is the termination of a teacher for these kinds of serious, serious violations which occur, which can occur, which we've seen now in a few districts around us, unfortunately. This is the, the one that talks about the 2%. So resolve that New York State School Boards supports legislation that would set the allowable growth factor of the real property tax cap at a minimum of 2%. So again, it again deals with the tax cap at a certain amount. Right now, again, you have negative values.
Right. So it wouldn't allow it to go below the 2%.
So you could. It doesn't mean that a district would, but that you could.
Right. Well, they want to cap it at that point. They want to say you can go no lower, then have to go no lower than 2%.
You would be compelled to go no lower. The next one, resolve that the New York State School Boards Association's 21 supports appropriate changes to state law, regulations and state policies that encourage and incentivize New York State school districts to address the health issues of sleep deprivation in teenagers by implementing later start, uh, school start times that are developmentally appropriate for middle school and high school students. And again, this is an issue that the district is attempting to address with our start time change that we expect to take place in September of 2018. This evening, we had a meeting, I'll talk about that a little later. But we will be getting out the materials from that meeting to the public and we will be talking about this all year to prepare people. We expect to have schedules, bus schedules for people to see by January as we move in that direction as the board has initiated. Number 23 is another one that is relevant to us. And that is resolve that the school, uh, New York State School Boards Association supports raising the allowable undesignated fund balance for school districts.
Right. So our, our undesignated fund balance is currently allowable at 4% all school districts across New York State. So right now, the reserves, I'm, they're trying to get that pushed upward. Reserves do not include, for instance, we're not allowed to reserve any money for the teacher's retirement system. Like a 1% change in that rate could result in at least a $200,000 swing, which is, you know, a huge amount for a district of our size. And also the cost of healthcare, you know, the health premiums. Last year, we had an 8% increase in our health premium for all covered employees and that, that was over $400,000. So the swings like that can really make a huge difference. So a 4% fund balance is, is really not a sufficient one for, but it's what's allowable by state law. So they're trying to increase that.
The next is, a next one that is relevant, resolve that the New York State School Boards Association supports increased and timely state funding for provision of appropriate mandated instruction for English as a new language students, including unaccompanied minors. This is an issue that we see in our district and it's something that we do with a great deal of diligence as we have more students coming to us with English language learner needs. At our elementary school, we have approximately 28 students. We have nine or 10 students at our middle school and our high school each as well. So you can see that our, our, we have an increasing number of students with these needs and we've had to add, we have added two teachers in the last few years in order to manage this growth. And part of that reason, the reason for the need for the new teachers as well, is that we have new regulations. They're called Part 154. And would you mind saying a few things about that, Natalie? About the change in the minutes, the exact minutes that you have to provide?
Sure. I don't remember them all off the top of my head.
No. But I'm just saying. You don't have to give the minutes.
Sorry.
But it's just the general need.
So, so the regulations changed about two years ago, Part 154, and the minutes for each level of an English language learner. So there's a beginner, an intermediate, and then somebody who is called expanding. And each, at each level, there are different minutes and different either push-in or pull-out services. And the minutes increased tremendously per student. So a student who is new to the country will get, you know, one 40-minute period a day of direct services and then another period of indirect services. So that's a push-in that would look like a teacher going into a Gen Ed classroom and working with a student. Or if that Gen Ed teacher is certified, she can provide that duly certified in ESL, you know, the TESOL certification, was, you know, provide services. But the increase in the services, in the minutes that are provided for students are really significant. And so between the increase in our student population, in the ENL population, English as new language learners, is significant. And then on top of that, the added mandated minutes that our, our students are to receive has put quite a strain on our teachers because we're small, but not that small. So our teachers are spread, we have three teachers now. We, two years ago, we had one. And then we increased our staff to three. So we have one at the elementary, one at the middle, and one at the high school. And the, the needs are, are covered, but we're certainly, the elementary, the most is, is spread thin. We're actually going to have one of our middle school teachers going there, most likely at least a period a day to assist. So, so it's, it's changed and it's significant.
And it's become a significant responsibility, which we take on gladly. The issue is where the funding has.
Correct. It's all about the funding.
And it has not been provided as it was supposed to be by, by the, the state for, you know, to assist us in this process. And there is, you know, it's, and it's not, and the numbers of minutes are so regulated when we could possibly find other ways and maybe even more effective ways of ensuring that the students learn. But we are required to, to go by a very fixed, you know, to align with a very fixed process. And there's one more, and that is number 31. Resolve that the New York State School Boards Association supports funding to expand career and technical education programs. The, this is a very significant issue for schools. There are certain new requirements for having career and technical education programs at the middle and even at the elementary level to have certain career standards taught. And then going on to the middle school and of course, to the high school. And while we want to provide these, we do feel there should be more support, more funding to provide these programs, including career surveys of different types and career instruction. So those are the major resolutions.
Just for the community, the key word that I hope you all heard was, they support legislation. So it's a group that is going to go to our legislatures in Albany and fight for them. And I recommend that each of us as a board member write our own legislatures and point out each of these items. And anyone in the audience can do that also. This is just a lobbying group that is supporting education across the state. And we have to keep putting pressure on them. One of the ones that Dr. Wills did not read was like number 19. We talked about the tax cap, the different limits. 19 says, just get rid of the tax cap.
I didn't mention that.
So, you know, this is, you know, that carries it to the total extreme. Forget about the 1%, the 2% making it negative. 19 just says, get rid of it. So what, what you have here is a group of resolutions that the New York State School Board will lobby our legislature's branches. But we should do it either as a single group or as individuals. Keep pestering them. And whenever they have a meeting, a local meeting, nothing's stopping us from asking these questions.
Moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Wills? There have been a number of district activities and events in the last several, few weeks, actually. I go back to our district goal of building relationships and we have really worked hard to provide opportunities for the community to come together. We had quite a wonderful event to support Puerto Rico and the other Caribbean islands where relatives of many of our community members live. And Puerto Rico is still suffering terribly from this disaster. And we had 500 people here from our community with generous hearts come together. We had wonderful performance concert by our staff members who we thanked for their participation. We've had, we had a wonderful dinner that people contributed to. There were over 500 people eating. And one thing that was just so, I just thought was so beautiful was one of the students who was serving, and we had a lot of students serving, a lot of parents serving, and he decided he would take some of the empanadas and go out to those waiting in line and bring them out so that they could have a little something to eat as they waited. And I just thought that, that symbolized some of the very sweet kind of, the sweetness of the event and of everything that took place that evening. The presentations, the music. We had an Ecuadorian band that came. We had our own students. And all of this went out to the public, so you've all seen it. But it helps to remember and we raised all together with that and other things we did over $5,000.
Great.
That, and what is really wonderful is that one of the members of our community, a pharmacist in our community, will be personally taking medications that he was able to get because this is one of the most serious problems they have, that they lack medications for diabetes, for other diseases. And our, and this is all sponsored by Make a Difference Club and all of the other clubs, the Art Club and the, the Interact Club. They're the ones who actually do this, this work and make this happen. And it feels very good for all of us. You know, we gain as much when we give, as you know, as the one who receives that donation. So it was really a special event. We also had Congressman Maloney here visiting our school. And he had a conversation, a town hall with our students. And all of, there were students of the fourth grade, the eighth grade, and seniors and sub-juniors at this special time with the congressman. And he answered some very hard-boiled questions. Students are not shy.
No.
And Mr. Scampoli arranged this for his participation in government group. And it was really, again, one of those great opportunities for our students to actually make a connection with our representative. We also had a facilities meeting recently where members of our community has joined. We had quite a number. We had at least 25 members of our community come out and also our administrators there at two meetings to begin the discussions. And I don't know if you want to say anything, Dave, about.
Yeah. It was, uh, the meeting on Tuesday night was very impressive in its turnout. And I found our administrators to be particularly engaged and, and impressive and gave presentations on the needs of the, the overall district. Well, first of all, there was, you know, Pat Bellino gave a presentation on the conditions as they exist and the energy performance contract and really educated everybody there and the community in, in what's going on. And then each, each school got, had their principal give a presentation on the specific needs for the school, for each school. And it was, it was great. And everybody learned a lot. And I'm really excited as to the potential for this, this committee to, to get some really good work done.
So we will be publishing, we'll be sending a letter out on the meeting, publishing the presentations, and we'll do this regularly. And at the next meeting, we're going to have work groups that will be formed to, to do some deeper study. And as we've said before, we're doing this to prepare for a larger capital project based on our fiscal position. And Jill will give a fiscal report at the next meeting as well to explain the, the why of why now. Okay? There's, there's a why now piece. It's, it's timeliness is everything as you're planning budgets and planning for the future. Also today, we had, we had a start time, later start time meeting. And we had some of our community there. We didn't have as many as we had last year in our committees. Now that the project is going to take place, the actual initiative will be implemented next September, we'll be sending out reports from the meeting today. There were presentations from the athletic program, from the transportation, on transportation, and on the rationale for the start time change. And as we said before, the sleep issue, which is now even on the school board's agenda, the Nobel Prizes I mentioned before, are given to those researchers who study the circadian rhythm and the problem with long-term health problems that occur with a lack of sleep. In fact, Mr. Scampoli did a study in his class that he showed me of students covered, this is a psychology class, and they did a data, a scale for, a graph for their sleep loss from the, the appropriate sleep time and the comparison with their, their sleep time. And there was one student who was 34 hours behind in his sleep in a week. That was pretty serious. But the average time was well over 10 hours of, of lost sleep. So it was an interesting project to get the students involved with taking a look at their sleep. So. Oh, and I must give a plug for the play. Please, please do try to see Adal's House. First of all, it was very ambitious that we're doing that play. It's going to be done in the black box format that we've done here once before, which means everyone will be on the stage as a smaller audience because we don't get the larger audiences usually for our drama. So there's a more intimate relationship with the players, with the, with the students. And the topic is very, very timely. It deals with women's issues, women's, the concerns of limitations. It deals with women's issues, women's, the concerns of limitations of women's, the kinds of situations that women are in. As you know, this has become a major topic now in the news. And it's something that we hope our students will learn from and that our community will see. There's a connection and a very, it's that it's a very relevant play at this time.
I'd like to open it up to public contribution on listed agenda items.
Do you have more?
Wait. Oh, I have more.
Curriculum report.
You have the curriculum. I jumped ahead.
Did you just skip me?
Doctor, I'm so sorry.
Not just sitting here because she's pretty.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
My, I'm having tracking difficulties and my eye skipped.
No worries.
Curriculum report.
Thank you.
It's the most important part of the meeting.
So this evening, sorry, earlier this week, we held a LADDY parent engagement evening, which was actually very well attended. Unfortunately, very well attended means that not everyone was really happy about it. But we structured the evening similar to the structures that exist within the LADDY classrooms. We actually had the parents who attended experience what a lesson is like in the LADDY classroom. I thought the most powerful part of the evening was we began the evening by having parents brainstorm the skills that they thought were essential for their children to have to be successful in their futures. And obviously, having no idea what they were going to put, they, they wrote the skills out in the all room, the middle school, in the whiteboard space all over on the room. And we took some time to go around and look at it. And we quickly realized that the skills that they hope their students are getting in school are the same exact skills that we push our teachers to make sure that help students develop well in our school. So we sort of reached common ground right away. We had a presentation following that opening activity, and then they entered into some choice activities. But I really thought they got a good feeling for what the classroom entails, what it looks like. They, opportunities for questions and answers at the end of the evening. And actually, I spoke with a couple of parents informally afterwards. And some had expressed that they actually had one perception coming in and left with a very different perception. So I thought that was successful. There's, obviously, not everyone felt the same way, but we'll continue to help parents understand what the purpose of that is. And our teachers will continue to be flexible and refine their practices to support all their students. So the first piece was very well attended, and I thought it was very well received. The District-Wide Professional Development Committee recently met. A lot of our conversations went into the planning of the Superintendent's Day, which is November seventh. We took a lot of feedback from teachers over the last year or so in structuring the day. We'll begin with a whole group activity similar to what we did for the opening of schools, where there'll be a couple of speakers and presentations. They're going to watch a video. It's really a good way to start the day. And then teachers will have an opportunity to break up into their K to twelve groups. They quickly figured out the first task, the opening of school, was to figure out why they were in the same group. And they quickly realized, or some groups quickly realized, that they were actually put in there by birthday. So we grouped teachers together with like birthday months. So they'll meet back in those same groups. And really, the objective of those meetings at that time will be to discuss the idea of one small change and reach a consensus on what's one small change that we can make here in Putnam Valley that'll have the greatest impact on students. In the afternoon, the day gets a little crazy. We have parent-teacher conferences going on in the elementary school. We have a special education department meeting. We have our self-committee meeting. We have a district safety committee meeting. And despite all those meetings, we still have about seventy teachers who are participating in teacher facilitated workshops. We surveyed teachers to identify workshop topics that were of interest to them. So we went from about twenty-five topics down to twelve. And then we had teachers sign up or prioritize which of those workshops were most interested. I have a spreadsheet on my computer that can make someone go blind. But I was able to, with the exception of two people, to schedule everyone into three of their top four choices and find facilitators for each of those workshops. So it's actually going to be very exciting. I appreciate the efforts of the teachers who volunteered to help facilitate it. And I hope it's successful so we can continue to do similar things in other conference days. The District-Wide Technology Committee met. We reviewed our mission and charter. And most of our conversations focused on providing building-specific and district-wide information to the Board of Education. And that those presentations should include not only highlights of our successes, where we hope to be in the future, but also barriers or obstacles that exist that we think prevent us or hinder us from getting there. So that'll be coming later in the school year. Our admin team did a walk-throughs of the LADDY classrooms. It was actually very impressive to see the structure work, to see it. Some students were on computers, some were not, some were working independently, some were working in small groups. One of my highlights was one student raised their hand and asked for help from a teacher. Another young girl sitting in her, in her group overheard the first three words of the question and jumped in that she can answer that question for her. So the teacher stepped back, the student moved in and helped her peer answer her question. The teacher circled back around to make sure she now understood it and can show that she got the correct information. But I thought that really sort of captured the essence of what the LADDY classroom is and empowering our students to play an active role and putting students in situations where they know a content so well that they're able to teach it to others, I thought was a great thing. Our self-committee team met that same day. It was a very busy day. And their focus was on curriculum integration and planning. Their self-committee is meeting again during Superintendent's Conference Day. And the Yale Ruler Implementation Team, we had a conference call with Bonnie Brown, who's our coach, this afternoon. And the District-Wide Implementation Teams are meeting tomorrow morning. At the elementary school, we had a kindergarten show, which I had the pleasure of attending. After the first twenty minutes of parents standing and waving, they actually opened the curtain to give parents a chance to wave because they know once the show starts, every parent stands up and waves. And even, it literally took twenty minutes to get past the waving portion. But they sang songs, parents were thrilled, they had a chance to go back to their classrooms. And as a parent of a kindergartner, it was certainly very exciting. There was also a parent orientation for our E and L students. The memorial celebration was held at the elementary school yesterday for Fatima. The strength and courage of the teachers that got up and spoke was very impressive. They had ice cream afterwards. And then they got to see their rock stream that was created, which was very impressive. So it was well attended. Teachers from multiple buildings were there, as was members of the family. K to twelve homework help night was held. And student grade level work, grade work analysis continues in team meetings. Coming soon, the elementary school likes their coming attractions. They're, they're working on their Yale Ruler Charter next Monday. Their Halloween parade is on the thirty-first on Halloween. And they're working on progress, monitoring, I mean, progress reports, reading assessments for their parent-teacher conferences in November. And photo retakes are Friday, November third. Middle school, members of the self-committee went on a hike at Granite Mountain. I know we're trying to make connections between our self-committee and all our buildings and community organizations. So some teachers and students went on a hike and met up with members of the Hudson Highlands Preserve. So that was our first step in making those connections. And I know there's research going on on a granite hill, a granite mountain that students and members of our self-committee are interested in participating in. The middle school spirit, Building Steering Committee met. The middle school Technology Committee met. I Ready Data Training is happening. I stopped in a classroom the other day with a group of teachers that were working with a consultant to review the data that we get from I Ready. I think it's essential that if we're going to give these assessments, that we use the information we get from them to drive instruction. And that was really the focus of that meeting. And a couple of coming attractions. Their Halloween bash is this Friday, and the PTA trunk or treat is on Sunday. At the high school, the ninth grade literacy, the ninth grade started a literacy study group. The technology team meeting, Building Steering Committee set their goals for IB implementation. They've begun discussions on course mappings, so what courses will be available through each content area. They have, the IDE or LADDY teachers are scheduled to visit Briar Cliff to see some, what the classrooms look like in a more established program. And our students in our first robotics team went to Carmel to visit their robotics team. And I found out today that Carmel actually lent a significant amount of equipment and lent us a robot for our students to use. So it'll be very exciting to see the work that they're able to do. Then I promised Brian I would give his sports upcoming attractions. So on Friday, our volleyball team is playing Nanuwet at four PM, at Nanuwet. Our football team is hosting a bowl game at home versus Nanuwet at six PM on Friday. The girls' soccer, who won yesterday, it was a very exciting game, is playing number two Irvington at Irvington at three PM on Friday. And the cross-country championships are held at four PM at Bonine Park. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Very busy. A lot of great things happening. And I like the use of the election day to not just do, to throw in the parent-teacher conferences and really get a lot of district-wide meetings. So we minimize disruption to the educational process. That's great. Sorry, Ms.-
It's all right. I had a question about when, I know they do the Achieve Three Thousand assessments in the late fall. I'm wondering if those are scheduled, are those this month or next month?
So Achieve Three Thousand is really implemented throughout. There's no scheduled time for the assessments to be given. My guidance and the guidance that teachers have received from their building administrators is that we don't want to schedule achieve like an assessment. I don't want instruction to stop so we can use Achieve Three Thousand to offer informational text. So our drive for teachers is really to find ways to meaningfully integrate the program into their instruction where it's, it fits in with what they're learning and they're using it as another resource to supplement what they're doing in their classroom. So students need to complete four assignments a month in order for it to sort of recalculate their levels. But those four, those four readings can happen across any of the content areas. So I know in some cases, it's being used heavily in science and social studies where there's a lot more content available for them. But what I don't want, which is, I know has happened in the past, and there was a lot of pushback from teachers and parents, was that we sort of develop a schedule and we say, at this day, at this time, this class is going to stop what they're doing. Everybody's going to pick a book, read it, or article and read it, and then take the assessment at the end. We don't want it implemented that way because it's disruptive to our instruction and our curriculum. Instead, I'd rather less assessments be used, but used in a more meaningful way. So that's been happening throughout the past two months and will continue through the school year.
Any other questions? I believe we have a report from the PTA. Christina, how many hats do you wear?
I thought you were just staying for the curriculum update.
Yeah, that's-
I was just excited about the new business.
That was thrilling to hear, though. So again, my name's Christina Casey. I am the Core Spending Secretary and Middle School Teacher Liaison for our PTA. So our PTA had a friendly teacher-staff membership competition between the elementary school and the middle school. It was a very close race, but the middle school won with seventy-eight percent of staff joining and seventy-seven percent of the elementary school staff joining. So great job to our teachers. And the winning school will be receiving a luncheon. We are currently having a membership drive for our elementary school families, which started on October nineteenth until November tenth. The grade with the most membership will receive scholastic dollars to be spent at the Fall Book Fair. All of our kindergarten families are invited to join us for a pizza and pumpkin party tomorrow, Friday, October twenty-seventh, from six-thirty to seven-thirty in the elementary school cafeteria. Cost is $10 per family to participate and an additional $10 if you want to order a large pizza. Each child can bring a pumpkin to decorate, and we'll have the materials to set up to decorate the pumpkins. And don't forget to wear your costumes. Elementary school and middle school picture retake days will be on Friday, November third. Be sure to return your picture packet on the day of retakes. Grades four through eight will also take their group picture that day. The Black Knights welcome Putnam Valley families to the West Point Hockey Game against Holy Cross on Friday, November seventeenth at seven o'clock PM. Tickets are $15 each and parking is free. A portion of each ticket purchase will be donated back to the PTA. The form to purchase tickets will be posted to Facebook, our website, and sent out via email. The elementary school book fair is starting on Monday, November thirteenth till Friday, November seventeenth, and will be open before the gym show on Wednesday, November fifteenth. We are looking for volunteers to help set up on Friday, November tenth, and to help pack up on Friday, November seventeenth. The PTA also runs a teacher-helping program called Three For Me. We encourage community members to volunteer three hours of their time over the course of a school year to support our elementary school teachers. We help our elementary school teachers by making copies, laminating, and getting projects set up. Hours are Wednesdays from nine eleven, nine to eleven AM, and Thursdays from twelve to two PM. And coffee and snacks are provided. To volunteer for any of these events mentioned tonight or to volunteer for any upcoming events, please sign up through your PTA account at www.putnamvalleypta.org or email us at info@putnamvalleypta.org. And like our Facebook page for more information and upcoming events. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I love how many, you know, the whole building relationships goal. A lot of the PTA events are about getting our students together, just like the trunk retreat that the PVE Education Foundation does. It just gets everybody together and celebrates our children and lets them have fun in a safe, community-building way, so. Love it. Now, can I say the public can speak on agenda items? No? Okay, so we'll move on to new business, and it's a very short list.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve longevity as per document number seventy-nine eighteen graduates' course credits as per document number eighty eighteen and in-service courses as per document number eighty-one eighteen for salary purposes. Reference documents attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number two.
Resolved a recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to approve Christine Aquilino for a point-two assignment in addition to her full-time teaching assignment as a provider of reading services to students with disabilities from September fifth, two thousand seventeen through September fourteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving right on to the consent agenda.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda, items two through nine, as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're approving CSE CPSA placements. We're approving an addendum to an agreement with the Pagon O'Neill Company, and they do investigations with regard to residency and employee issues. We're approving additions to the substitute tutor list. We're approving a substitute nurse. We're approving two hours of planning time for the Superintendent Conference Days for November seventh to two, two members of our staff. We're approving the winter season coaches for wrestling, cheerleading, girls and boys' basketball ball, boy swimming, ice hockey, and indoor track. And for ice hockey, swimming, and indoor track, we do that with other schools. And Lakeland is the one we do the ice hockey and swimming with. We're approving a clerical substitute for pupil personnel services. And we're approving our teacher to apply, to provide adaptive physical education instructing at the medical, middle, middle school for the next month and a half.
All in favor?
Aye.
Open it up to public contribution on any agenda item. Then, I would like to resolve to convene an executive session for three matters of the employment histories of three particular persons, two medical matters of two particular persons, one matter of current litigation, and two matters of collective negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen of the Civil Service Law, the Taylor Law.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
After which, there will be no further business after the executive session. Okay, that's it. Good night, everyone. Thank you very much. Happy Halloween.